Night raining, so we decided to see if I could get a little bit of shade.
At your house?
Yeah. No, no, you're for the back end.
Oh.
Without, with the family too. We all want one up there.
Yeah, usually.
Did you plan to do something to it?
It was just kind of like the camel's back.
Oh, she didn't want to. We were, it was gonna be, it was gonna be some time since she.
Yeah.
I hope.
I can tell where you are.
That's good.
Yeah, they can tell in your house.
If you only had two kids, I would love one. My third kid, that's a whole other mission.
It does, definitely.
It changes things. You've been there. You completely changed your car. You can't, you can't win championships.
He's in Vegas, I mean, I'm never gonna go.
You too.
There's like two years there and I barely.
Only two?
Well, you know, mine was basically farther.
Yeah. She did.
Okay, okay, I'm good. Cool.
She's so pretty, I wish you'd get that.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I was smiling, then we'll be trying to get over the face, I'll please.
Mayor, I've got another plan, I've got a meeting.
You sure you don't want to stay?
I wish I could, but I've got the prior committee meeting.
Oh, man.
I'm sure I have.
He's gonna go.
I'm going.
So.
I'm ready, you got it. I'm gonna shoot you.
Alright, thank you.
I thought I'd tell you, when you were talking over there, we got the whole special thing. After Monmel, uh, short.
Not yet.
Really, just a special thing. Absolutely right out. Good seeing you, couple.
Right. You gotta learn everything from me.
See you.
I'll have to watch. We were trying to figure that out, yeah, and now we can call it back.
Alright, I'll go ahead and call us back to order. Thank you Judge Bailey for coming out for this special occasion. Congratulations to those of you starting your new term. With that, we will move on to the next agenda item under special guests and announcements. It's the introduction of our new Director of Human Resources. So, I am proud to introduce Doreen Mattis to y'all. We stole her from Little Rock Human Resources and have thrown her into the deep end where she is.
Trial by fire.
Trial by fire. So, I'll let you introduce yourself, Doreen.
As the mayor said, my name is Doreen Mattis. I have spent the last three and a half years at the City of Little Rock in their Human Resources Department, so I'm pretty familiar with promotional processes for public safety and civil service and all things government. So, I am thrilled to be here. Mayor Norris, thank you so much for the opportunity. And with the new members, we're all starting in this journey together, so let's just try to keep each other afloat. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Mattis? Alright, well, thank you. You got off easy. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the December 21st regular meeting minutes. Y'all have received an amended minutes from the City Clerk Treasurer. Is there any discussion on that?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve. Do I hear a second and a second?
Second, second.
Alright, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is public comment. I have a single public comment card that is on an agenda item, so we will discuss that at the appropriate time. We will move on to the, let's see, procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. We move right into unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the third reading of Ordinance 1019, Amending the Monmel City Code. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could, please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Monmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1019, an ordinance amending multiple sections of the Monmel City Code to require stormwater management and drainage facilities to be designed and constructed to manage a 25-year expectancy of events in residential areas and for other purposes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Just a refresher for the two new council members, both of whom I'm sure are already familiar with this. The gist of this ordinance is that it increases the drainage requirements from 10 years to 25 years in residential areas. And that mirrors some of our surrounding cities and will hopefully decrease flooding in new subdivisions. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Motion to approve Ordinance 1019.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, that was.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 1019. Any discussion? Seeing none, I should have pointed out at the top of the meeting, I spoke to Councilmember Holt, who said that he was gonna be unavailable for tonight's meeting, so he is absent. With that, seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Let's start with Councilmember Shin.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Mazoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley.
Motion passes. Ordinance 1019 is adopted. The next order of business is in new business. State law requires that the City Council meet at the first meeting of the year and organize the council. I think we're heads and shoulders above some cities in the state and that we already have ordinances that address a lot of these. We've included the relevant ordinances in the council packet, but now's a good time, if you see anything procedurally with the meeting that y'all would like to change or amend, this is just a time for us to discuss that. So, I'll go ahead and open the floor. Alright, with that, if there's no further discussion from that which we just had, we will move on to the second item of new business, which is the, it's a waiver request from Monmel City Code Section 5480, the Master Land Use Plan Amendment. I do have a public comment card on this, but let me go ahead and give you an overview of what's going on. Y'all may recall, not too long ago, there were some applicants that owned property in the Monmel Country Club area. They were seeking to amend the master land use plan and zoning of that. It was the old Monmel Water Management Treatment Facility there. And, so, the city code requires that, once that is denied, and the City Council denied it, you cannot reapply for one year. It does allow for a waiver of that one-year requirement, and that is what the applicant is requesting. So, with that, what I'd like to do is have the applicant give a brief overview of why they're requesting that waiver, and then we'll move right on to public comment. So, Mr. Harris, if you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Ron Harris, 6309 South Wind Drive, North Little Rock, Arkansas. And I was just thinking about tonight, and this is the first time I've been in front of this podium as a builder. It's mostly been as a energy customer service manager, and as you know, there's a lot of events happened in the electric world here. Thank goodness, I can tell you that the citizens of Monmel have, they don't call me as much anymore, so that's, that's, that's a, that's a good sign. Tonight, just to bring you up to speed, I think y'all will remember about the area behind Monmel Country Club. And this was what was designed and was not approved, and as you can see, that was quite a bit of, quite a bit of activity, you know, going through the country club, and I'm sure that, that probably had a little concern about that. And so, so that was another entity, another couple of guys I know, and, but then I got to thinking and I was hearing about property, particularly Monmel Country Club property available on the golf course. There's, there's basically, I don't, there's very few. I don't think, I think, I think this might be the last five buildable lots, I don't know. So, so we just kinda decided to just downscale it, and then after hearing about the traffic study, when Central Arkansas Water was, you know, there, was equivalent to like 14 homes, so we say, okay, well, let's, let's do five. And this would be a wonderful little area there, and so, anyway, that's what we're, as a new owner, kind of representing CAW tonight, I'm asking for the waiver so that we can again go before the Planning Commission and come, then again come before the City Council, and with our new and improved plan, and, you know, and working out what that might look like. So, with that, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. What we'll do is, if anyone has any questions for Mr. Harris, we can come back to those. We typically give public comments opportunity to chime in before too long, so I have a public comment card from Mr. Gibb Carpenter. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Gibb Carpenter. I live at 222 Mountain Terrace Circle, and I'm here representing Monmel Country Club. Now, I'm not sure what the reason was for setting Section 9412, had a 12-month waiting period, but I expect that there was probably a good reason. What I've also not heard is why a time-sensitive contract represents good cause to waive a city ordinance, and why it's time-sensitive in the first place. Now, for the council's information, Mr. Ron Harris approached Monmel Country Club with a request that the club support his plan to develop the former water plant, treatment plant property, and asked the club to endorse him. At its regular December Board of Directors meeting, the Board of Directors, Monmel Country Club voted unanimously to reject Mr. Harris's proposal. If it's necessary, at the appropriate time, the club's members will once again adamantly and vehemently oppose the rezoning of that property that is completely contained within the boundaries of our property. But there's a due process outlined in the city code, and now is not the time to litigate that issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Alright, I'll go ahead and open the floor for any discussion. Oh, hey, this says Councilmember Scott. You do not look like Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Mazoni?
I know the waiver process is important because no ordinance can cover everything, but in times past, waivers can become, to really dilute an ordinance or regulation. So, partly is, is a waiver going to be, can that be in the spirit of the original regulation? So, is there any reason, what was the, what was the point of the 12-month waiting period? Was it something for this, or was it for another, another incidence that were, that were happening that are now no longer, no longer of importance?
I can only guess as to the reason for that.
Is there a date? Please, 9412?
If you could speak into your microphone.
Is there a date on this 9412? When it was first established, the 12-month waiting period?
The 5480, which is the one from the master land use amendment, so there's two. One is the waiver from the one-year requirement on the master land use plan amendment, and one is on the zoning amendment application. From the first one, 54-80, master land use, looks like that was passed in Ordinance 317, which dates back to 1998. Which dodges the question a little bit, and then it looks like the other 9412, according to the city attorney's, the city code online, doesn't have a date associated with it, which are usually those ordinances that were a part of the first codification, if memory serves.
They said 1998?
1998 was the one, was the date for Ordinance 317, which included Section 54-80, Master Land Use Plan Amendment waiver. Councilmember Mosley?
I can only speculate, but it makes, it would make sense to, once something's settled, to have a period of time before something else is brought up under the same situation, just to prevent people from badgering the council and badgering other parties that have an interest in this, and I think a one-year is very reasonable for something like this. I would like to ask the city attorney's opinion of what good cause means. Is it something special, or is it ordinary, or what does it mean?
Excuse me, I just looked, just to see if I could find something addressing this in case law, or in the Attorney General opinions, or even in our code today, and I didn't find a definition of good cause. It, you know, it's very subjective as to what, you know, you determine to be good cause, but as you guys have kind of referenced already, you know, the, the general rule is gonna be that you wait the 12 months. So, it would probably need to be something, you know, in my, my interpretation, something unusual, some, you know, type of reason outside of the norm, why you would, would waive that period, that's gonna be our general rule.
Okay, well, I would, I would agree with that. That, to me, seemed to, for good cause, would mean something unusual, something that may benefit the city or all the residents as a whole, or something, something like that, out of the ordinary. To me, this, just another business deal that might come up for that is just sort of an ordinary event. So, I guess I would be inclined to say, let's go ahead and wait for the entire year. I can't even remember now exactly when that was we settled it the last time. I think it was like May or June, is that correct?
That was my question.
Was that July? I don't, I don't recall.
Might have been, but yeah, it's only been, if it was July, it's only been about five months. I'd, I'd really suggest that, that we just, we just wait until it's, comes up again and the, and the, within the, within the parameters of the code. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
That was my question. When, I couldn't remember when we settled it the last time.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? Or is it?
What you just did.
Okay, okay. In this discussion, would, I guess what we're asking for is good cause to be that it's a, is a new owner and a totally different development than what was, so that's why we're asking for the waiver. So, we felt that was good cause, anyway.
Thank you, sir.
A, a point of clarification, the CAW still own this property?
They do, yes.
It appears they do, Mr. Mosley.
Okay, so nothing, nothing's changed as far as ownership?
Correct. I think the, the two differences that I understood being presented were, one, a prospective new buyer, and then the shift from condos or apartments to a five estate subdivision, were the two that I believe. Is there any additional discussion on this?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I need to preface what I'm fixing to say with my disappointment in City Council the last time we voted on this. I believe it was July. I guess people don't understand that one of the things that separates our country from Third World countries and dictatorships is property rights. They're called, they're often referred to as the bundle of rights. Now, I'm not gonna lecture everybody on what the bundle, all of the bundle of rights are, but one of them is you're right, if you own property, to allow it to be developed to a highest and best use. And I, I'm not gonna explain that. Now, that doesn't mean the best, highest and best use, that means a highest and best use, and several things can qualify for that. Now, CAW owns this property, and if they want to sell it to someone who thinks they have a highest and best use for this property, which they obviously do, who are we to take away one of the bundle of property rights in our country? I just, I, I was just shocked at the vote on that. And I didn't explain it at that time, which I'm giving a, a brief explanation tonight. But if people want more information on it, I can go through the entire thing. I'm well-educated on it. But, I think if these people want to go ahead and proceed to develop a highest and best use on this property, who are we to stop this? It's part of the bundle of rights. It's the American way. And I'm sorry if some people get upset, but people get upset about everything all the time. So, there's no way I can support holding this off any longer. It should not have been shot down in the first place. So, sorry, I'll get off my soapbox.
I can, I can see you on camera, and I do not see a soapbox, but no, thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Gardner, did I see your mic on?
You did. Did you turn it off?
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, sir. So, just for clarification, the waiver essentially allows the, the new project to go back to the Planning Commission and be reviewed again. Is that correct? So, we're not voting to approve anything, other than we're granting a waiver for them to go back to Planning Commission and apply again. Is that the process that this would go through?
Correct. So, if a waiver was granted on both Agenda Items B and C, it would go back to the Planning Commission, from the Planning Commission, back to the City Council.
Okay. And, and kind of echoing what Councilmember Saunders said, yeah, I was, I voted for it the first time, mainly because I wanted it to go through the process of being presented, and that project was never presented, never had that chance to see its day in court, if you will. Planning Commission never got to look at the plans, and then it didn't get to come to council either, so I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure we, the council and the Planning Commission will review anything that's proposed again. This just allows that process to move forward, so.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion?
I'd like to just point out something that, in that last process, that, that property is zoned as open space. There is, there is no right to develop that land and never has been since Monmel was first formed. It was intended for open space, so it's not like, Mr. Saunders, I kinda, I, I understand what he's saying, but I think, I think that is more applicable if that land was zoned for residential, and we were somehow or another denying them the ability to develop that land to its highest use. But it's, it's not, it's not zoned residential, it's intended to be open space, and, and that's what we reaffirmed last summer. So, I don't think we're denying anybody of anything, and I, I really think we just ought to, I'll stick with the ordinances on this, and, and I don't see anything unusual about this situation.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, sir. One of the things I remember from last time was, or if it's just the way Monmel's code is, but when property is zoned as open space in Monmel, and it's owned by a utility or a similar type of quasi-government, they can use that property for whatever purpose that they want. And so, since CAW is the owner of this open space property, they have the right to use that for their operations. Not that they would ever want to do anything, they're going forward, but as the property owner of open space, being a, a, a utility, they could come back and use it for their day-to-day operations if they wanted to. Is that correct, Ms. City Attorney, Madam City Attorney? So, I remember seeing that last time, was that an open space, if it was owned by a city or other type of entity like that, they could use it for their operations?
That's, it's a conditional use under 94494, I believe. And so, one of the conditional uses listed there is public utility buildings and facilities, including units for residential emergency personnel when necessary for serving the surrounding area, provided no public business office and no repair or storage facility or sewer treatment plant are built. So, there are some uses that they could make of it under that conditional use, and some that they could not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to waive the one-year waiting period for Master Land Use Plan Amendment? I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No. Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Mosley? Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazoni?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Is that?
Five, three.
Five, three. Alright, the waiver passes. The next item for business is waiver of Monmel City Code Section 94-12, the zoning amendment application. This is essentially the same thing, except for the zoning change, not the land use plan amendment. Yes. So, I'll go ahead and open the floor for any discussion on that issue.
My comments are the same as the previous, thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's no additional discussions, I'd entertain a motion to waive the one-year waiting period requirement for zoning amendment application.
Go off.
Alright, I've got a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and just do a roll call vote from the start with this one, if you don't mind, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazoni?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Motion carries. So, these items are free to be brought back to the Planning Commission. Thank you all for coming. Next up is Resolution 2021-01, the nepotism hiring practice resolution. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Monmel, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2021-1, a resolution restricting nepotism in hiring practices.
Alright, so Resolution 89-27 basically said this exact same thing, except it was a different form of government. It was dealing with the Board of Directors and City Manager, and the language was a little bit different. As I was reviewing the Personnel Handbook and working on updating that, I figured it was probably time to update that resolution, and so, basically bringing this back forward. Is there any discussion on that? Resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-1.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Thank you. Motion carries. Next order of business is the first reading of Ordinance 1020, amending the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, Treasury, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1020, and ordinance amending section 70-75 of the Mammell City Code to permit the Director of Planning and Permits to review and approve minor subdivision and lot splits and for other purposes.
I could take a stab at describing this, but I figured it might be easier just to kind of, Mr. Grummer, come up and explain this one for you guys?
Scott Grummer, Director of Planning and Permits, City of Mammell. So the ordinance for the City of Mammell allows for, or requires pretty much the review of any plat that comes across by the Planning Commission. It was customary whenever Jim Neri was here to review the minor plats, although by ordinance, it was required to go to the Planning Commission. In most municipalities, you'll find that minor plats that require just a few lots can be staff-reviewed, which is something that I was accustomed to in my previous planning work. So this ordinance would allow for any minor plats that would be just three lots or less reviewed in-house. Anything that would be of more lots would require Planning Commission review. And this would not take away the Planning Commission review of other things, such as site plans, or PRDs, or PCDs, things that require development plans to be reviewed. So this is merely for expediting platting process through the, through the city and minimizing the holdup on kind of simple plat process.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. This also allows the Planning and Permits Director to refer something to the Planning Commission if there's any instances that, or factors that are important enough that he or she deems appropriate to send to the Planning Commission. With that, is there any discussion on Ordinance 1020?
Yes. Could you ask Mr. Grummer to come back up? I've got two or three questions.
Two or three questions, Mr. Grummer?
Yes, sir, Councilmember.
Yes, sir. From what I understand, this law was on the books to, to bring things, but before you came into this position, it really wasn't being followed. Is that correct? So basically, this, this ordinance is to put, put the law consistent with what has been the current practice. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now, when I came in, I actually reverted back and have brought everything to the Planning Commission to be in compliance with the ordinance, but it was a drastic change to the development community who were accustomed to staff review of these type of things.
Okay. Well, thank you for at least catching this. I appreciate it and trying to go ahead and abide by the law. I would ask you what, I, I didn't see the minutes from the Planning Commission with all the discussion. Was, were there some minutes from that Planning Commission meeting?
We have draft minutes that are together. There wasn't very much discussion by the Planning Commission. It was all done in subcommittee.
Okay. If, if you wouldn't mind, would you attach those minutes to the next packet so we can kind of see what the discussion was as to whether there was any hesitation by the, by the Planning Commissioners on that due pass?
Yes, sir. Not a problem.
Were there, were there any no votes on that, or was this a unanimous vote?
I believe it was a unanimous vote, sir.
Okay.
If I can add to that, I want to say that one of the ideas came from the Planning Commission, who was surprised that they were seeing these sort of minor amendments being brought to them and not just handled internally. But that would have been at a proceeding meeting that sort of spurred the proposed amendment.
Correct.
Okay, okay. As far as the, there were some subdivisions which would be allowed fewer than four lots. Do you have any, do you have any hesitation about doing that? You know, the lot splits and that sort of thing don't seem to be a big deal, but even a small subdivision, should, should that, should that be just handled administratively, do you think, Mr. Grummer?
I believe so. Those are typically pretty well-regulated by the subdivision ordinance, so it lines out what the requirements are that we, in the review process. It doesn't require much scrutiny. Now, these minor plats do, they can only be reviewed in-house and staff-wise, only if there's no dedication of right-of-way, no easement abandonments, things like that. So those types of things have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Okay. I think those are the only questions I have. I would look forward to seeing those minutes in the next packet. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Director Grummer, one, I guess one example is, in a couple of meetings ago, there was a property owner in the Osage area that had two adjoining lots that they wanted to merge. Is that an example of something that you would be able to sign off on without bringing to the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And that may have been one of the ones that they were surprised about that was coming before them. But so, just to kind of give an example, it's, we're talking minor things that you'd be able to sign off on and just handle in-house?
Yes, sir. And we do get quite a, I say quite a few, a number of residential lots in the Country Club of Arkansas subdivision that the, are allowed the ability to add on additional footage into the golf course. It's something that has been allowed for many years. Those are just simple administrative-type stuff that doesn't really require Planning Commission.
Thank you, sir. This will be on second reading at the next city council meeting if there's no further discussion. Seeing none, thank you. Also, at the next city council meeting, there will be another ordinance that was at the Planning Commission that I just didn't add to this agenda. With that, that concludes new business. We will move on to Mayor's comments really quickly. I just want to congratulate and thank the new council members. And it's, it's interesting seeing them up here, and of course, Councilmember Williams and Mosley, who are starting their next terms. I believe Mosley is starting his third term, is it?
That's correct.
Three terms. Councilmember Williams starting her second term. And of course, a couple first-termers here, so be nice, and we'll, we'll break them in gently. But I, I'm reassured that both of the newest council members have been attending meetings and have been doing their due diligence. I think Mammell's been fortunate recently that every new council member that comes in is not a complete stranger to what's going on, even if they are, are, or were an outsider, so to speak. So it's nice to do that. I also want to, I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and Happy Thanksgiving and holiday, or Thanksgiving, and Happy New Year and holidays in general that we just came through. I want to give a special thank you. I was, I was driving around on New Year's Day, and I just got to thinking about the police officers, firefighters, and EMS here that were at work when you were enjoying your family time. So a special thank you to all of y'all for being vigilant so that we, we don't always have to as residents. So thank you to y'all. With that, we will move on to council member comments.
I've got just a quick comment. I just, I just wanted to say it's an honor and privilege to, to be able to serve the residents of Ward 1 there at the council and, and promise to continue to ask a lot of questions and try to, try to keep Mammell a resident-sensitive community, one that preserves our quality of life and doesn't get carried away with some things. Thank you very much again. I thank my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments? It's, so for the new folks, you just hit that little button that says "mic", and I'll, I'll be able to call on you there. Well, all right, I guess we will, let me see, I'm not seeing any. Okay. We'll move on to city attorney comments. Madam City Attorney?
No comments.
Madam City Clerk?
No comments.
I will just draw everyone's attention to the Planning Commission opening. This position was held by Commissioner John Todd for, I want to say, he said 20 years. It actually goes back, he says he was appointed back in the, under the former form of government, so by the Board of Directors at that time. Anyways, he said he will not be seeking reappointment, that he has done his time and is happy to move on. So that means there is a vacant seat here. So please pass it on to your constituents or individuals that you think may be interested in doing that. And with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. We are adjourned. I, I always want, it's like, all, all in favor say yes. Yes. All opposed, say no. No.